I'd like to call the Village Board Meeting to order. This is number 3,072 of April 7th. Clerk, would you please follow up?
Abernathy, Abernathy, Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Very good. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I've tried a full agenda here tonight. This brings us to the approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion to please approve the Village Board Meeting minutes from March 24th?
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Kim. Any discussion? Clerk, please follow up.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Next, that brings us to item five on the agenda for public commentary. Now, this is the time where whoever wishes can approach the microphone and address the board. Just please tell the clerk your name and address.
Sure. My name is Lauren Allen. I live at 101 West Park Street. I consider myself a resident of downtown Mundaline. So, this, the apartment complex we're talking about on Holly, East Holly, is actually in my backyard, and I'm in full support of it. I think that it is a unique opportunity for Mundaline to have the first of something of its kind in the county. I think we have a great need for more affordable and accessible housing, and I think it will increase the beautification of downtown Mundaline, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to approach? Thank you.
Hi. I'm Deb Belasco, 211-01, West Andover Drive, Mundaline. I'm also an owner of Park Street Restaurant, and I realize from the last time I was here that you can't really talk about this, but we're here again to try and encourage the Board to soon purchase of the parking lot on the north-east corner of Park and Seymour. This lot is being used by many people, by the area businesses. If this lot is not accessible to the customers, the cars that are currently parking there will be distributed into the street parking and potentially impact a lot of the businesses. The current owner has been gracious enough to allow all of us to use this property, and I was hoping that the village would be willing to step up and take ownership. If the intention of Mundaline, of the village is to make downtown Mundaline area businesses thrive and increase the foot traffic, I think it's an important step for the village to demonstrate its commitment to the area businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Piper Hodson from 615 North Prairie in Mundaline, and I wanted to talk about the development at 407 East Holly as well. I am inclined to support this development. I'm relatively new to the village. I just moved here in August, and so I also know that there are a lot of things I don't know, but I do know that a big concern is maintaining property values when we're looking at the possibility of affordable housing. That's always a big concern. But the biggest issue in that is management, and looking at the management that we've seen in Evergreen, and I looked at the documents for the meeting tonight, and I saw the memo from Highland Park, and so that leads me to think that that would be good. So, management is one of my big concerns, and I feel good about that. I understand there may be opportunity costs to using the land in that way instead of some other way, but, like I said, I've only been here a short time, but I've not heard anything about any other use that is coming up for that land, and so, given that the village has been working so hard on the beautification of downtown, on reinvigorating downtown, on creating that integrated commercial and residential space, this seems to me to fit very much within the village's plan, not just in terms of the aesthetics and what the actual planning has been done to make it fit in, in terms of how it looks, but it also seems to sit fit with the priorities that I've been reading about when I was considering moving to Mundaline, that this is the direction we wanted to go. And so, like I said, I'm new, and so, you know, I don't know everything, but that's my opinion as a resident of Mundaline.
Could you spell your last name, please?
H-O-D-S-O-N.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one? Okay. All right, we'll close the floor then and move on to presentations and awards. There's a proclamation in your packet there, exhibit number two, where we're naming April 25th as Arbor Day, and it's just a day to recognize the importance of trees, and coincidentally, tonight in the omnibus section, we have the approval, or, you know, subject to vote, but we have an item there for allocating funds towards replacing over 100 trees in our parkway. And so, it's kind of apropos then that we remember trees on National Arbor Day, and there's a big history about that, and you can read that in exhibit two. There's no public hearings tonight, and that takes us to my mayor's report, and just a little shout-out to, first of all, spring is upon us, and so is baseball season, and we're fortunate in this area to have real, two real good baseball teams at the high school level, Carmel and Mundaline High School, both ranked pretty high in the state rankings, and so some great baseball going on. I went to a game the other day. There were kids playing that are estimated to go in, you know, the first five rounds in the draft, in the major league draft. Great baseball going on, so if you want to watch a game, good baseball for free, you can just go to one of the two high schools right here locally and catch some great baseball. So, a little shout-out there. Item A on the mayor's report, this is a commission appointment of John Raymer to the Human Relations Commission. This is exhibit three, so I'd like a motion to approve Mr. Raymer as the Human Relations Commission member. Motion. Motion by Sullivan?
Sorry, second?
Second by Boss. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim? Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is he here?
Yeah. Mr. Raymer, would you like to come on up and get sworn in?
They usually come here, I don't know if they have to.
Can I go to graphic court?
Not that you have experience with that. No.
When, uh, some of my younger, older members.
Can you raise your right hand, repeat after me? I, John Raymer, do solemnly swear.
I, John Raymer, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Human Relations Commissioner.
Of the Office of Human Relations Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
You might just need to sign something, and I appreciate everyone's agreement.
Don't stand, that makes me feel old.
Congratulations.
It's not good any to tell the students that. Do you have a family member here?
Yes, my wife, Melissa, is here with me. Just a brief comment. We've been in Mundaline for 24 years, raised all four of our children here. We still have two at the high school, been involved extensively with the community, and I'm really thankful for this opportunity and look forward to helping make Mundaline an even better place. We have connections in the community, in the Hispanic community. My wife is fluent in Spanish, and we're really looking forward to this. My wife will have her opinion and be part of it also, but we want to help make Mundaline an even better place for the diversity of people that live here. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you very much. All right. This brings us to item B under my report, and this pertains to 407 East Holly Street, the project there. We took action on this two weeks ago, and immediately following, I was asked by some trustees to get more information and revisit this. So, we did that, and so now here we are. Now, there's no motion listed on the agenda, so what we're going to do is just discuss this, and then we'll get with Mr. Marino to see how best to proceed. So, as a review, Vera Green is the developer seeking to build a 40-unit apartment complex at 407 East Holly. Now, that's where the old Loch Nut Building sits between the post office and the railroad tracks. Larry Pucetieri is a principal at Vera Green, and he presented to us about a month ago. Financing for his project is through programs offered through the Illinois Housing Development Authority, otherwise known as IHDA, and the rentals there would be allocated into various affordable housing programs, including some for Section 8, some for households with moderate income levels as well. Now, of the 40 units, 12 would be allocated to renters with disabilities, and four of those would be made handicapped accessible. The remaining 36 would be made handicapped visitable. So, what is the issue before us now? So, just to be clear here tonight, this board is not going to say yes or no to this project, okay? Vera Green's concept plan requires no variations, and so it's possible that they could secure financing, get a building permit, and then build a project without ever having to appear before the Plan and Zoning Commission or even this village board. That's how it works here. If you buy a property and your building conforms to the zoning laws, well, you can go get a building permit and build away. All right? So, in Vera Green's case, though, since they're applying for IHDA financing programs, they require various letters from the village for that application. First, a letter stating that the concept conforms with the local zoning laws, a letter stating that the concept conformed with our comprehensive plan, and then finally, a letter from me stating whether or not the community supports the concept. Now, those first two letters have already gone out, but it's the third one that we're concerned with now, and information was requested regarding that. All right? Following me here? Okay, good. Now, this part of the application, that is for the letter of support, can be dealt with by the applicant, Vera Green, in a number of ways. If there's no letter, then the applicant can explain steps that they took to get the letter. If the letter has concerns about the project, then the applicant can explain how those concerns are going to be addressed. So, nothing we do here tonight seals the fate of this project one way or the other. Okay? So, since the last meeting, okay, we've asked for information. What new information have we obtained? Now, there's two types of information that we've gotten besides clarifying what the project looks like, getting more detail there. First, Vera Green's market study for the project was completed since we last took action two weeks ago, and they have forwarded that to us. Our staff gets these kinds of studies routinely from builders, and they're very well-versed in analyzing these studies. Now, second, our own planning department staff did our own study of the affordable housing situation in our village, and it's quite revealing. Okay, now, a lot of this is in the packet there, okay? In your packet, you'll see concerns that our staff has with the market study done for Vera Green by Valerie Kretschmer, a consultant from Evanston. All right? Our staff lists a number of concerns, but most notable about this is the exclusion of almost 700 nearby apartment units due to her not being able to get a returned phone call from the owner, the manager. Now, because of this, she ended up treating these units as though they didn't exist, and then drew conclusions from that. Instead of using, instead, she went ahead and used comparisons from units in Libertyville, hundreds of units from Vernon Hills as well. So, if you follow me here, all 84 of those apartment units on McKinley, right there, right around the corner, were not included in the market study. All those, all 66 of the units on South Chicago were ignored. All the units on 45 were not included. The Locklomond Apartments not included in the market study. Total of about 583 units were omitted right here in Mundaline, in this local area, instead using comparable properties pretty far away. These excluded units amount to almost 40 percent of our village's apartments, and excluding them, in my opinion, it seems that the study's conclusions may be very inaccurate. And so, is anyone from Vera Green here tonight that wants to, okay, I want to give you a chance, if you want to address that?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me back. It's good to see everybody again. I'll be as efficient with this as I was with a pointer last time, it looks like. There we go. Can I have everybody on the team introduce themselves, and then we'll answer the questions as appropriate to our owner's expertise?
I'm Chris Pope. I'm from Lake County United. So, we're a coalition of 32 mainly congregations and a few social service organizations across the county, including the Center for Independent Living.
Hadi Stevens is the program director at the Lake County Center for Independent Living, serving Lake and McHenry County.
Hi, Mary Owen-Temanalcy. I'm the president of Lake County Residential Development Corporation. We're a partner with Vera Green in the project.
So, Lake County is residential, is development, is our co, going to be our co-owner in the project. Sorry, I wanted to clarify that. We mentioned it last time, but just so everybody knows. Lake County Center for Independent Living and Lake County United actually identified the need for the project originally and came and found us as a developer, to be the developer of the project. So, it wasn't us coming in and landing in the community and saying, hey, this would be a good place. It was them coming to us. They had actually done an extensive search of a variety of properties in Lake County before they settled on this, this location is most appropriate. Specifically in regard to the market study, we're glad to take that additional information, go back to the market study people, and say, does this change our conclusions? But I think there's a little bit of apples and oranges in what we're talking about. My reaction to, you know, what's being talked about, so you're saying there's a more multifamily apartments, or more rental apartments than is stated in the market study? And like I say, I'm going to go back and share that with them and have them react to that. But really, what the, what the issue is for us is how much affordable apartments are there, or how many, excuse me, poor grammar, how many affordable apartments there are? And even more so in a subset of that is how many affordable family apartments are there as opposed to affordable senior and family apartments, because we're trying to serve a family population, and the two are age segregated. And I think, you know, I don't want to spend a whole night going through each page of the market study and bore you all to tears. I think the thing I would call to your attention is, besides the persistent tone of the market study, which is much more effusive in terms of supporting the need than many other products we've done, and I should say, I've been involved in over three dozen of these developments, and I say these, affordable, senior, family, special needs, homeless, the whole gamut, and we've never had one have any difficulty renting up. The truth of the matter is that the affordable housing need is so strong in all our communities that they're going to beat a path to our door. I did one, I'm the co-owner of a project in Mount Prospect. It was serving special needs, and we were oversubscribed in one day for all the units, and it was about 50 apartments. That's very, we're very confident that's going to happen here as well, although I understand we have to explain to you that's why. If you look on page 18 of the market study, it says approximately 7,700 households in the PMA, which is Mundaline and a circle drawn around Mundaline include neighboring communities, have incomes under $50,000, which is our maximum income for people who live at the property, and would potentially be qualified to rent one of the units at Mundaline Apartments, depending on the household size. Victor Ray's a good point in his report, you know, that maybe a quarter of those, the market study says, will come from outside of Mundaline proper. So, if you want to say, well, I'm just concerned about Mundaline, then take a quarter of those off, and we still have 5,800 families eligible to live in our 40 apartments, and these are people who are income-qualified to live there. And that doesn't even address the fact that we're getting a lot of our referrals for the special needs units for the disabled in the, in the building. They're going to come from SILs and from the state. So, 14 of those are kind of like not even in the market, so we're not even having to fill those because those are going to be fiercely oversubscribed by state referrals and SIL referrals. So, as I mentioned before, Vera Green has to undertake financial guarantees for this development that are quite severe, and we wouldn't take the market risk on our own books, our own financial risk of going, having trouble with this project if we didn't feel really secure about the project. And so, I urge you again, if you have time, you know, it's a, it's a good cure for insomnia, but if you can read the whole market study, I think you'll see a consistent tone of this is a very low penetration rate, this is a very quick absorption rate, this is one of the strongest, and this is actually a credit to the Mundaline community. They find, like we did, this site so attractive because of all the wonderful amenities you have surrounding it, and they feel that people are going to beat a path to the door. Our experience in general in reading this market study believes that as well, and if you've got several thousand families, if you've got several thousand families who are eligible, we have no worry about filling out the 40, especially since, you know, a dozen of the 40, 14 of the 40 are already spoken for basically. So, that's my short summary. We're glad to answer specific questions you guys have.
Well, that kind of begs the question then, how many affordable units do we have in Mundaline? And our staff did a study, and coming from the IHDA, the IHDA's data says that we have over 3,400 affordable units, that is, family units, I believe it was family, that's affordable by families in the low and moderate income levels. So, the state mandates a 10 percent level to be exempt from some of the mandates that they put on a village to then get a, a affordable housing plan instated. And we're exempt because we have basically oh, well over three times what the state mandates for affordable housing. So, I guess we just have to ask ourselves, I mean, if we're going to write a letter in support of this project, we have to ask ourselves, do we want a housing stock type which is more of the same that we already have? Or would we rather see something there that we really have a shortage of? And I think you mentioned senior housing. I'll tell you what, we get asked about this all the time. We know that there are a lot of seniors in town who I think would love to sell their single-family homes and move into a nice, age-restricted apartment complex here in Mundaline where they want to live. So, that's one use that I would prefer to see in that spot, having it so close to all the amenities like that. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to some of the trustees if anyone has questions or comments.
Just ask a question clarifying, because apparently I'm very confused. I've heard that there were going to be eight apartments for people with disabilities. I've heard that there would be 12 apartments for people with disabilities, and just now you were mentioning 14. So...
We have 20 percent, sometimes I get confused, so don't necessarily rely on my memory. We have 20 percent of the units, so of the 40, that'll be eight. Eight units will be for the disabled referred by the state. Those are called SRN units, State Referral Network units. In addition, we've set aside four Section 8s for the disabled, so that those will be SIL referrals and work with the SIL program. SIL will also work with State Referral Network, but it's in addition to those. So, we have the 12, and I did say 14, and I meant to say 12. So, that's what we have for the special needs category.
Okay. You said you'll set aside four of the Section 8, so is that someone who has disabilities who is also federally subsidized, or, or people, or instead of renting to Section 8, you are renting to people with disabilities?
We're saying that we're going to give the rental assistance of four units in the apartment building that can only be occupied by people who qualify as disabled. Did that answer what you're asking?
Maybe I'm just not getting this. I hate to be. People with disabilities aren't, it's not necessarily someone who also qualifies for subsidies. So, is it just someone with disabilities, or someone with disabilities, or someone who qualifies for federal assistance that also has disabilities?
I understand, yes. The federal, the Section 8 assistance can go up to people at 80 percent of the area median income, because...
So, those additional four are going to be reserved for people with disabilities that get federal subsidies?
Well, they're only getting the federal subsidies because they're choosing to live in those apartments.
Yes.
Yes.
But it's not just someone who has a disability, but maybe goes to a day program and is holding a job?
They could hold a job. In fact, many of our tenants hold a job, but they're limited to incomes of 60 percent of the area median income. And I said 80 percent a minute ago, and I want to make that distinction so everybody's clear. The Section 8 program allows up to 80 percent. Our building has elected, because of the tax credit program, to have all units at a maximum of 60 percent or below. And so, the two qualifying events for somebody to live in those four units would be they have a disability, and they are at 60 percent of the area median income and below. So, a wealthy person who has a disability is not eligible to live in those units. A low-income person without a disability cannot live in those four units either.
Okay.
Trustee Kim.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions based on the suggestions from Highland Park and a few things that were negotiated in your plan.
Hello?
Okay. They had asked to go from re-force part-time social worker to a full-time social worker. Are things like this in building management something that can be negotiated?
How we manage a building, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. You had told us that it'd be a part-time management, but with Highland Park, there were concessions made after a year of recent negotiation. Is that something you managed for a year as long?
I'm going to have our property manager talk about the Highland Park because I'm not as familiar as she is.
Highland Park owns those properties too.
This is Polly Keel from Evergreen Real Estate.
They own the properties there. So, they hired a management company and then gave them the direction of what they wanted to do.
The village owns the building.
The city owns Ravinia Housing and also Frank V. Pierce, yes. I'm Polly Keel from Evergreen Real Estate Services. We have applied for a grant for a full-time social service coordinator to serve not only Frank V. Pierce but Walnut Place. Highland Park has an operating agreement with the owner of Walnut Place to serve as the day-to-day operator. So, we serve as the management agent for all three properties. We haven't heard yet whether we're getting funding for it, but certainly in, in senior buildings, it's great to have a social service coordinator to help with accessing services, doing short-term intervention, that kind of thing. So, yes, we have applied for a grant for a social service coordinator there. We also provide training to our managers who work with projects that don't have access to a social service coordinator.
And you sounded like, I think you said like two minutes ago, like it would be a grant for a full-time social service coordinator?
We have applied for full-time, yes. Sorry.
And I think just a couple of comments too, based on the packet that I just gave. I believe this development is about $13 million. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And we did see your mind, but that's actually more money than we spent on a building, all the buildings. And based on the recommendation from Highland Park, it's been good reviews. I do want to make a point that it is entirely dependent on management. We do have to put a lot of weight on that as well, because there's good and bad poorly managed properties that we have to pay that money. The tenants that would be in the building, they're also going through a program of 32 congregational members, or...
No. What we're saying is that Lake County United, one of the two original sponsors of the project, has 32 congregational members, and they're the ones who identified the original need. Working with member SIL, which is one of the members of Lake County United, and they collectively said, we really need to address the need in the area.
So, any tenants of the building would be coming through this program?
No. SIL will, SIL will do the 12 units. Our State Referral Network will coordinate with SIL, and then SIL will do the other four units. And then the other people will just apply, you know, will publicize in the paper, we have affordable apartments for rent, and they'll apply, and go through a screening process like anybody else. And they just need to income-qualify, and then we'll do the typical property management screening-type things, you know, credit checks, background checks, home checks, you know, all those kind of things, and see if we feel that they'd be appropriate tenants for the apartments.
Out of curiosity, do we have an ordinance for these tenants? Do you, how many things do you have to work right now?
It's based on a time period. So we have one hundred and twenty days. We have, it's four occasions within one hundred and twenty days in RIT.
Probably so, yeah.
So four occasions of particular calls for service. Certain things don't qualify, but crimes of a, or calls for service of a nuisance-type, loud music, disturbances, domestic-type situations, those things would all qualify. If it takes place within a certain amount of time, then it qualifies for our nuisance debate.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Simple.
I've got a couple of questions. First off, as far as the physically disabled and the affordable units, is there any way preference can be shown to Mundaline residents as far as applying for and getting a priority? Because you had mentioned that, you know, your other units are all oversubscribed, which means, I'm assuming, there's quite a waiting list for this type of a unit. So does a Mundaline resident who is in need just go into the big giant pool of people waiting? So is this a benefit for a Mundaline resident with a disability, or a low-income Mundaline resident?
We can, and I've worked in other communities where we have made a preference. We can't exclude anyone under fair housing law. But on our waitlist, and as we start to evaluate applicants, and we'll start taking applications early on, so we can make a preference for anyone currently living, or working even, in Mundaline as a preference, that they could go to the top of the list in eligibility. They still have to go through the same screening...
Right, so you actually can control the list and determine, out of the list, who gets picked in to go?
Well, we can only make, we can only make a preference for people who live or work in your community. We can't control the list. Anyone can apply.
And how big, how big is this list of, you know, where do your, the typical resident of this development, where are they going to come from? Where, where are they going to be...
We would advertise in your community first.
But other than that, is it advertised in Lake County and in the state of Illinois?
Well, under...
And federally? Is it, I mean, how big of a net do you cast to reel in all the residents that are going to come, live in this community?
Because what happens in all these projects is because we're going to be, we know we're going to be so oversubscribed that we have a very small marketing budget, and because we don't need to go out anywhere else. If we put an ad in the local paper, if we by any chance didn't get sufficient applicants, then we could expand that geographic advertisement, the marketing campaign, but it's, we haven't had to in our experience.
So it's purely by advertising, direct advertising?
There's a, there's a twenty percent State Referral Network, which are coming from the state.
From the state of Illinois.
That's right, yeah.
So these residents, at least twenty percent, could be coming from anywhere?
But no, but that twenty percent are for people with disabilities? And what we have done is we've engaged the SIL to send their clients directly to the State Referral Network. So we've already started talking to them about making sure they're in that first group that gets referred.
Why don't you have more of these units for the residents that are disabled? Because, you know, I have seen the need for that, and for senior citizens that are disabled. As the mayor said, about a third of our households in Mundaline are already low-to-moderate income households. And I look at our neighbors, and we're doing pretty good compared to our neighbors. What would you folks, you're the experts, what is a healthy mix of a community for that low-to-moderate income to have? Because I look at our total of a third, and I'm looking at all of our neighboring communities who, let's say they're less than a third, what is the healthy number there? Because the thing that I was really intrigued about this project was the disabled housing. That was what really jumped out at me, and the nice-looking building. But the further I dug into it, it's like was said earlier, this is almost just more of what we've already got in Mundaline. It's really not something new. But that nine, what is it, eight units, or twelve units for disabilities? Why can't that be bigger? And why can't this be for senior citizens? Because that's what we, I believe, there's really a strong need for, of something we don't have in this town.
Okay, when it comes to people with disability, us at the Center for Independent Living, we pride ourselves in independent living. To bring a group of people with disabilities to a building where it's all disabilities is no different than being in an institution. We want, we want inclusion for the people that we are moving out of a nursing home, or that we're bringing into those buildings. So that's what we want. We want them to feel included in the community that they should be part of.
But you've only got, you only see a need for like twelve? But, but that's what I'm saying, you're, if there's such a big need, why only twelve?
They want to have an integrated residential set.
But why can't we do the other twenty-eight units to be for seniors, senior housing? And integrate the disabled with seniors that can't afford to pay their taxes or whatever? Why can't this be a senior slash disabled housing unit? Because that would be something, what I think is unique. Because, you know, the property this is being proposed as is at truly a cornerstone of brand-new downtown Mundaline. And it's really a trophy location, and I would feel more comfortable bringing in something unique that we don't have, rather than something that we've already got a third of in the community.
We have, some of the people that we also have with disabilities are people who are families who have a member who has a disability. So it's not necessarily just a case of just one person with a disability. We also have families. And like I said before, it's about inclusion. We want them to have the experience, to really feel that they are part of the community. When you put a group of people with disabilities, with seniors, in most cases, a senior may be considered also as a person with a disability. But you want to, well, some of them, I mean, not all, but we just want them to have that experience, that they can feel included in the community, just with families and, you know, people growing up together.
We can't have a very large number to, this state is under an incentive to move people out of institutions that have disabilities. So we couldn't even get this building approved by the state if it was like half the units.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee Boss?
So, from us tonight, we've already sent two letters.
Correct.
What is it that you are looking for from us tonight, Mr. Mayor?
Well, the other letter has not been sent, the letter of support, or the letter stating that we have concerns. So we just need to go around and get some thoughts and the consensus on whether we send a letter that is supportive of this, or whether we send a letter that has concerns.
Have we ever sent a letter like that before?
Well, not since I've been on the board.
Okay, but...
Ever, I don't know.
Do you remember ever doing it?
No, I don't think I can remember.
We're the longest group in the family. Yeah, Charlie's been the longest.
You know, the thing is, there are a lot of housing developments that we've looked at in my tenure on the board, that have come to fruition or not. I mean, I can think of several that either I supported or opposed. But I've never been asked to send a letter saying that I supported or opposed it. And they've already gotten letters saying, you know, they can come here, and really, they can come here. There's, if they comply with our zoning ordinances, this can be built, and it doesn't require anything more from the Village Board. To me, this development is no different than a lot of other developments that have, like I said, either come or not come to town. Trustee Sullivan and I were just on a negotiating team for development that the owner of the property wanted in the worst way, but I didn't think was the best that we could do for our community. And sort of, I look at this in much the same way. If they come to town, so be it, they come to town. But they want my wholehearted support, a letter stating that. You know, I guess the letter I would write would say, you know, they're really not my first choice. Not that I wouldn't like, you know, affordable housing in Mundaline, but I think we have plenty of it. I would love housing for, more housing for people with disabilities. We do have, you know, SIL's housing around Mundaline, but if we need more, well, I think that's great. But as Trustee Simple pointed out, this is a cornerstone of our downtown. Is this a home run for me? Is this absolutely what I want there? No. If they come because they meet our zoning, am I fine with that? Yep. But do I want to write a letter saying I wholeheartedly support? I can't. I don't wholeheartedly support it. If they come, they come, so be it. But that's not the same thing as wholeheartedly supporting it. Just because of the location that it's at, I guess I wanted something bigger. And I don't look at this development as any different than any of the other developments, except that this development is asking for a letter, which we've never done. There aren't that many housing developments in Mundaline that I voted on that I would have been willing to write a letter about. And certainly, there are ones that we've negotiated recently that I absolutely wouldn't... And there's, I'm on a negotiating one with Trustee Abernathy that I'm really not happy about, but if it comes to Mundaline, so be it. So, for me, I can write a letter saying, so be it, but I don't think that that's what they want.
Okay. Anyone else? Just need to go around and get some, get the thoughts here. Trustee Sullivan, sure.
You want my thoughts? Okay. Well, you know, we've tried and tried to attract development downtown. And I don't think that we've been out trying to attract a low-income housing development. But on the other hand, this is thirteen million dollars of increment in a TIF district. You can look at the percentages of what we would term low-income housing in Mundaline and say, well, we've got enough of it. On the other hand, perhaps because of Mundaline being what it is, and I think we all like what it is, it is a town that is of mixed demographics. It is ethnically mixed. And it has a good mix of economic strata. And so, I guess what I'm most concerned about in regard to a low-income housing development is how it's managed, and how residents are screened, how effectively they're screened. And if I could predict and be convinced that screening was effective, and management was going to be A-plus, then I wouldn't have any reservations in regard to this project. But I don't have that crystal ball, and so those questions remain somewhat unanswered. Nevertheless, I'm not going to say I would disfavor this. I think that it's a good project, certainly a major addition to the increment downtown. I think we realize we have to start someplace. And it's not like this is the last vacant lot down there. It may be one of the first. It is one of the first. It also has the advantage of the development company willing to help us with our dedication for roadway purposes, leading into Cardinal Square, which of course is the major residential development in the downtown. Well, that's helpful. That's... Still have some question marks, I guess. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't try and oppose this. Okay?
In addition to the comments I had earlier, I fully understand the reasons for the location that they're choosing. They have disabled residents that will live there, and it's in close proximity to a train station, that seems to make sense to me. There's, I'm glad to know there's a vetted procedure where people would apply, but they would also get their screening or credit check back or whatever, there's all these steps involved. You know, we also have to keep in mind that affordable housing, or low-income, you know, widow, parent, or a single mother, a recently divorced father. It sounds to me like, in addition to the disabled units, that the rest of them would be for families, is that what I heard? So it wouldn't be a single person living there by themselves, it would be for families , I would say?
Okay, I'm getting the idea.
So, I would, I would be in favor of it, and I would sign this letter. I would also, you know, entertain, maybe we could put in there that we could meet again in a year and see how it's been going, and see if it can make some changes if there are any that we see on intensive management, if there are any issues.
Okay.
Could I just add something? So we keep talking about this thirteen million dollars, though we haven't really, I mean, that's just a number you've given us that's not vetted by us. But if you're building forty units, and you're saying it's going to cost thirteen million, you're building at a cost of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per, like, basically seven hundred square feet. Compared to other buildings that we've seen, that seems like a very expensive building.
Welcome to government in action. Unfortunately, there are several things that contribute to that. One is we have to use a prevailing wage level because there's government funds in there, which is much higher than we can have it built.
We're well aware of prevailing wage.
All right, great. I'll have to talk to you about that. We have a very high energy efficiency quotient in this, that'll be much more than would normally be done, and that's expensive improvements as well. The property is, ownership is, needs to be in place for fifteen years, so we have to build substantially. We get additional points, and we'd want to anyway, for having an exterior facade, which is not, which is primarily bricks and hardy board and, you know, permanent-type things, and not, I'm not a contractor, and not things like siding, it's another additional cost. That thirteen million dollar figure is not all bricks and sticks, so we've got fees to the financing people, we've got fees to the investors, we've got reserves. So because there are so many people involved, investors, state lenders and stuff, we have to put up many more reserves than we normally put up in a traditional market-rate apartment building.
Okay, so when we were talking about, you know, when Trustee Sullivan and Trustee Kim were talking about, you know, adding to our EAV, thirteen million dollars is not the building. What is the actual building?
Well, we have to get it appraised when we're done to see what the added value is, isn't that how you would do it for the TIF? Yeah. So, I mean, you guys will probably know local values a little better than myself, what it would appraise at.
But, but if you're saying that the thirteen million you're talking about is for hard costs as well as soft costs, as well as financing costs, you must know that a percentage is, is the hard cost, the actual building cost, actually closer to eight million then?
I think it is. I don't, I didn't bring it up with me. It's, I'm getting blank stares all around. I'll look it up, but it is, I think it's around eight, it's no less than six, somewhere between six and eight.
So that's different than thirteen, so I just want my fellow board members to understand that, that you're talking total cost. Trustee Kim, as you keep talking about, that's less than we spent on our village hall. Our village hall is only hard costs, not all the other costs that they're including. It's not Kerry, it's not all the other things that he's putting in there. Either way, okay.
Okay. Trustee, Trustee Abernathy?
Okay, we have raised this.
I'll go first. I'm not, I'm not willing to co-sign, like Trustee Voss. I'm not willing to put my name on a letter of saying, this is what we need downtown Mundaline. If it comes based upon current zoning and everything else, it comes, just like other developments we have. So that's my position.
For once, I've kept kind of silent. Disabilities, I, I like the fact that this is a project that is for people with disabilities. I remember asking the last time you were before us, how many units? And you said twelve, and it is, in fact, twelve. I, I would have liked that number to have been a little higher. I also remember asking, or maybe not asking, but stating, just like Trustee Semple, I would much rather this be a property that was for senior housing because that is something we, we do need in town is senior hous, is affordable senior housing. And the third thing that I know I asked the last time was on management issues that Trustee Kim had also brought up. I would like to see, you had said there'd be someone during the day. I would like to see someone, at least at the beginning, twenty-four hours. And that doesn't seem to be happening. So in my opinion, I would rather be with Trustee Voss and Trustee Semple. If you don't need variances and you don't need anything to come and build the building, fine, build the building, but I don't know that I'd want to sign a letter saying we have full community support. I don't know that we're able to do that. Or we should do that. Or I am.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I look at this project as I would look at any other project coming into town. And if we're looking at any project coming into town, you know, and looking at the criteria for development, it meets a criteria for development, zoning, planning, comprehensive plan, and all of that. I think it's precedent-setting to then send a support letter, which we don't do for any other type of development. I, I think that it should stand on its own merits of planning and zoning and the comprehensive plan. And I wouldn't look at it any different than I would look at any other development, not looking at, you know, who's living there or any of the other criteria, but looking at it from a development standpoint. I, I think it stands on its own merits and that the need for an additional letter, which we've never done before, unless we're going to start doing that for other future developments or anybody else that's asking it, I don't think that we make this a standalone type item.
Okay. Okay, so after talking to Mr. Moreno, I think we, we need to make two motions to get through this. The first would be a motion to withdraw authorization sending the letter that we acted on two weeks ago. Okay? That would be the first motion. And then if someone could make that motion.
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Semple. Discussion?
What's the withdrawing for?
Two weeks ago, we took action. There was a motion in the omnibus based upon the presentation two weeks prior to that, which authorized three letters to go out, two of which did. Then the day after, we had questions. And so we withheld the third letter. So now, this is a motion to withdraw authorization for that letter of support. And we have a motion by Abernathy, second by Semple. Okay. Any other discussion? Do you have anything else or? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Okay. And then? This would be a motion to... What I'm suggesting. If, for consideration by the board, is a motion to bring this matter back at the next meeting on, I believe, April twenty-eighth, for further consideration, to either send a letter of support or a letter of concern with respect to this development.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Semple?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Abernathy, discussion?
Yeah, sorry. I'm, now that confused me. Because didn't we just decide that we're not sending a letter of support?
Sending the specific letter of support that was acted on at the last meeting.
But if we're going to reconsider it in two weeks, do you think in two weeks we could change our minds and decide to send it?
And, and, and if you pass the motion, I suggest that, of course, somebody has to make it. But if you passed it, it would merely bring it back to then determine whether you want to send some kind of letter of support, maybe not a letter that was acted on at the last meeting, or some kind of letter of support or a letter of concern. And if you don't want to bring it back in two weeks, consider that and we would both know on this motion.
Okay, can I ask one more question? Can we tonight take a vote to see if we wanted to send a letter of, of concern or non-support?
Well, we have a motion standing right now.
No, we don't have a motion.
Yeah, they do.
They made the motion. Yeah, we, yeah.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I'll remove my motion from the table.
Okay. Trustee Semple takes his motion.
I'll take my second away.
If you, if you, if somebody wished to make a motion to send a letter of concern, you could do that. But then, that letter of concern would have to come up at the next meeting to be approved. You would merely be asking that a letter of concern be drafted for consideration of approval or, or disapproval at the next board meeting.
We would actually be writing a letter of concern on this property?
Well, a concern about what is being proposed for this town.
Charlie, if we don't do any motion, we're done.
If you don't do any motion, you're done for tonight, but you're not necessarily done with bringing this back.
Well, the other two motion, the other two letters have already gone out. And if we do nothing else, those two letters have gone out.
Yes, it, it could still come back. But if you, if you, if you acted on a motion tonight not to bring it back at the next meeting or either consideration of a motion of approval or a motion of concern, then it would be finalized.
I'll make my, I'll make the motion again.
I'll second my motion again.
Follow Charlie's.
We restate the motion?
Yeah.
The motion is to bring this matter back at the next meeting on April twenty-eighth to consider either a motion of support or a motion of...
Letter of support or a letter of concern.
Okay. And at the last meeting, a motion was approved, send a letter of support. And at this meeting, a motion failed to rescind that letter. So the motion...
No, 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 the letter pa, it passed to rescind the letter.
To withdraw on... That motion, that, what was the tally?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
There were four yes votes?
Four yes votes and two no votes.
Okay, I didn't... The old ears, right? Thought it was three and three and the mayor didn't vote.
No, if it was three and three, the mayor would have voted.
Okay, I understand what's going on. Thank you. Okay, so there's a motion, seconded. Any further discussion? Yes, Trustee Kim?
The letter, the, 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 um, the, um, letter of concern will go without the concern?
We don't know.
It would merely, you would merely be asking that a letter be drafted of either support or concern and bring back for the board to consider either approve or not approve.
Mr. Moreno? A vote of yes means it's going to come back next week.
Into it.
If we're either a yes or support or concern. If we vote no, it won't come back.
So that means if you want a letter of concern to go out, you would vote yes, and we'll discuss it next time. Right? Yeah.
Or if you want to just have this be done, you vote no.
Well, then there would be no letter that goes out at all. In which case, in their application, they would simply describe the efforts that they made to obtain the letter.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I mean, we, we established earlier that we, we have not, in our memories, sent a letter of support previously under any other development. So I would ask the same question. Have we sent a letter of concern in the past of any other developments? So that, basically, we have neither sent a letter of support or concern in the past related to any other development in...
I, I don't believe you've been asked to send a letter of support or a development. Here you've been asked.
Right.
The, the letter that was acted on two weeks ago was written by the board. And it's something they were asking for.
We may have been informally asked during, like, negotiations or something if we would consider doing that, but I don't think it's come before the board because typically, we don't consider that type of thing.
I, I, I don't believe that, it's not mine.
Okay.
Okay, no other discussion? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
No.
Abernathy?
No.
Meyer?
No.
Voss?
No.
Kim?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Okay. Motion fails. Okay. And so no letter gets sent.
Nope.
Go on the first page.
Here we go, mayor's report. This takes us to item C. I need a motion, please, to adopt a resolution waiving the formal competitive bidding process for construction and installation of a dais for the village hall boardroom and awarding a contract to WW Displays at thirty, at three-three-three Washington Boulevard in Mundaline, Illinois. This is exhibit six.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Semple? Second by Kim, any discussion?
Yeah.
Trustee Voss?
So, um, last week when I was at village hall and we, with Pete, we were looking at this and realized at what was currently being adjusted, I would actually not be able to see really over it. It would hit me about here. So, um, we have changed that. Will that change the cost at all? Hasn't it be lowered?
Potentially. I mean, it's a minor change, really, to cut your saving costs. They were possibly saying.
You can always sit on a phonebook.
Oh, again, all things that Pete's had done, but, um, so it was, it was going to be a thirty-high inch desk, thirty-inch high desk with fourteen inches added on.
Oh, that'd be me too.
Right, I'm not the only...
Feel like the guy in...
I am not the only really short one here. And therefore, it got lowered to how high?
Chief, correct me, I think it's now at, um, thirty-eight, thirty-eight, right, overall?
Actually, yeah, just thirty-eight inches is what's being proposed. Mr. Scaram's going to look at the possibility of even modifying that. Some of it's structural, but there is flexibility in that, so it, it's adjustable.
Okay, so I, and we talked about, like, the inside is angled so that you could get closer and be higher up and all that, but really, that just wasn't going to work. So I'm glad that you got that taken care of and hopefully, that'll save us a little bit of money even.
One quick comment.
Yes. Trustee Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the village staff for awarding the contract to a Mundaline company based on the feedback from last meeting.
Here, here.
Yes.
So this was in the works before the last meeting, I know you're...
Yeah, I was just going to say...
I knew you were thinking it, I could see it on your face. This is in the works.
I would just say, we did not award this contract because of comments made by you in the last meeting.
No, the thank you was because of, the thank you was because of comments. We understand that this was in the works long before that. Okay? Okay.
Anyone else? On the dais, okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Very good, motion carries, taking us to item D. This is a motion to adopt a resolution waiving the formal competitive bidding process for office furniture, awarding a contract for purchase of office furniture to Anderson Office Interiors, Addison, Illinois, and awarding a contract for furniture installations to Contract Installations in Mundaline, Illinois, exhibit seven.
So moved.
Motion by Semple, second by Kim, discussion?
Again, along the same lines, I did talk to staff and they did not believe that the office furniture being purchased from Anderson Office Interiors, that there is not a local company that could do that.
They don't?
There is not.
There's not, we checked.
Now, really, the closest commercial dealership in office furnishing is Interior, Interior Investments in Lincolnshire. So that'd be the closest thing that would even get to Mundaline.
Well, it's not in Mundaline and that's all that matters.
And they were part of, they did bid on this. They're fairly limited within the area of the region, July.
Bless you.
Bless you.
All right. And again, Staples isn't an option.
No, ma'am. They, they do not do a commercial line of furniture that would be something that we could invest in for twenty years.
No, I, you know, trying to shop Mundaline. All right.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Motion carries. Motion carries. That concludes the mayor's report. We'll go to trustee reports. Public Works Committee, trustee Meyer.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything to report tonight. Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Very good, taking us to the Finance Committee, trustee Sullivan.
My thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have one motion to consider, that a motion to approve the payment of bills to AT&amp;T in the amount of $7,345, and I will make that motion. I need a second.
Second?
Motion by Sullivan, second by trustee Voss. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Trustee Meyer.
Despite the fact, for those of you that know, I have retired after forty-two and a half years. Um, I will still have to abstain on these AT&amp;T things going forward because I still receive benefits despite my retirement.
Okay. What else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Abstain.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And this evening, on our omnibus list of motions, we have a motion to pay our bills totaling $1,037,344.83. There are two major bills in that amount. One to Joint Action Water Agency, $192,268. And the biggie, to the Weston Solutions Company, construction of Village Hall. This payment, $661,079.09. And that concludes my report, thank you. Plus, anyone has a question or a concern? Hearing none, I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Next, Public Safety Committee, trustee Semple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one motion on the agenda this evening. Pretty easy one. We're going to be disposing of an old fire truck. Uh, so we'll have the fire chief give us a real brief description here after the motion. Uh, but I'm gonna make the motion to pass an ordinance authorizing the sale of a 1992 Pierce Pumper to the Quad County Fire Equipment Company at Routes 116 and 47 in Sonoma, Illinois, for the sum of $14,500, seen as exhibit public safety dash one in your board packets this evening.
Second?
Motion by Semple, second by Abernathy. Discussion?
All right, chief, can you give us the elevator speech on what we're doing here and why we're getting rid of this vehicle?
Uh, we, this is the vehicle that will be sold when we get our replacement engine, which will be in the fall of this year, but because we got the price we did, uh, we were subject to selling this by, actually it was the end of March, he continued to get it to the board meeting, so that's what we're proposing. The rest was in the memo.
So when is it leaving the premises?
Uh, fairly quick. After approval tonight, I would imagine it'll be out of here within the next week or so.
And what position is it right now? Is it like a third string or fourth string?
Um, it's benched and would be on the injured reserve, stripped down completely.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chief Sash, do anything else for fire that you'd like to mention publicly?
Just as a reminder to our residents, 'cause I know it's getting late, we have our blood drive on April 19th, so that will be before our next board meeting from nine to three here.
Do we need appointments for that?
It's recommended. We're getting some pretty good streaming right now of appointments, so you can sign up through Life Source through their website.
And I did talk with the chief this past week. You'll notice in the budget packets, there are quite a few long-term expenses, uh, not this year, but years out for the fire department. And we probably will, I would guess, mid to late summer, have probably a pretty big Public Safety Committee meeting, talking about long-term planning, possible additional fire stations, fire trucks, et cetera, et cetera. Lot of big-ticket things off in the future, but something we need to plan for. Don't need to worry about it right now in this budget year, but it's time to start formulating thoughts and, uh, maybe prudent to future others later on this year. Chief Gunther, anything for police? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've said plenty tonight.
Semple? All right. Trustee Voss, Community and Economic Development Committee.
Um, just a couple of quick things before we get to my motions. Uh, we have a couple of new businesses in town. I'm gonna sneeze, sorry. Chi Town Dogs has, um, opened up. They are the eatery part of Mavericks, but they have a separate entrance. You don't have to go drink and dance to have Chi Town Dogs. They're located at 2061 West Maple. And Nutri Body Plus at 837 South Lake Street. Uh, a nutritional club that sells herbal-like products. Also, Omega Restaurant has a new owner and an entirely changed menu, if you haven't been there. Like, very recently. I suggest you try it again, and it's an entirely different eating experience. Also, I wanna wish a happy Passover to all our residents who will be celebrating Passover next week. And, um, moving on, I would like to, uh, make a motion to pants and ordinance approving the Mundaline Property Enhancement Grant Program as seen as exhibit CEDC1 in your packet. This is the, um, downtown, mostly, property enhancement that we have been discussing, and I'll make that motion.
Motion by Voss, second by Kim. Any discussion?
Yes, I have.
Trustee Abernathy?
Yes. Um, I, I really like this program. I just am very afraid of a couple of things. Um, is, do we, and I've read through this, and I know they go to Building Department to do, to start the application process to secure the loans, and then it comes before the board, correct? Through planning. And, but they have to go also with, in building, because in case they need permits or anything else. Um, is, you're looking confused.
We said loans.
I didn't mean loans. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean loans. Um, my question is, is there going to be any kind of priority? Is it first come, first served?
At this point, it is. It's first come, first served.
At this point, it is. So if someone comes in and they have a project that's $25,000, they're gonna eat a quarter of it up right away?
It's possible, yes. We've already spoken to a couple of business owners that have expressed an interest and are really waiting for approval of this.
Oh, that's my second question. Once we approve this, does it, like, they can come in tomorrow and...
Yes.
Well, not tomorrow, two weeks.
No, they could go in tomorrow and they could start the application process.
Doesn't it come back less than two weeks?
Uh, no, this is the, this is the motion.
It would take more than that, right? About four weeks before it would come back to the board, once they start. Is that correct? It's about a four-week process?
It would take some time before the applicant would come to the board to get approval for their request, but yes, someone can come in as soon as tomorrow to apply for this monies.
Okay. I, I just, I'm, I've had a lot of businesses wanting to do this, that they've asked me about, that they're waiting for this. So once this is approved, I don't want businesses to be upset and say, "Okay, we've got all these applications, and are we gonna cut off once we see we've got allocations of $75,000 already? We're done. We can't accept applications anymore, or what are we gonna do?"
Well, I think we've talked enough fast, and if it's a growing success, it'd be up to the board to, uh, offer more monies. Because this is our first try at this, uh...
Also, it would mean that there's businesses investing money. Remember, we're not paying a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Okay, and so this would be a good problem to have, in my opinion.
Okay.
If that were to happen, that would be great. Yes, trustee Sullivan?
I thought that the concept was there would be a period of application. At that point in time, consideration would be made in regard to all of the applications, the first and the last, in regard to their merits. Awards would be made within the framework of the amount.
That's not what this says.
Yeah, no, that was tossed around in a committee of the whole meeting a number of months ago, where we were talking about the different possibilities, and we settled on...
From an administrative standpoint, it could happen that way, though.
Yeah, from an administrative standpoint, it could. I think one of the things that we got, uh, we considered was, um, the timing of all of that, and that you could have a business come in that would miss the deadline. Uh, and then would, uh, because this is not a reimbursement, you have to get approval for the grant prior to making the improvement to the building. And so, um, we thought that that may be some, uh, problematic in that we might be excluding some businesses 'cause they couldn't sit around and wait for the next grant cycle. So we thought it would be best. I don't know if there's a perfect solution, but that was one of the hangups we had.
Yeah, we in essence did want to discourage property owners, business owners, to hold off on their improvements because of this submittal deadlines. We wanted to have them do it as soon as possible, and if the monies ran out, would certainly come back to the board to discuss it and have the board consider maybe pouring more money into the program because of its huge success.
But I, I think we're not opposed to, uh, I think the important thing is to launch the program, and let's see how it goes. And if we see that it is, uh, needs some tweaking, then we'll bring that back to the board.
Um, I do have a question. So, item three in here. I see that, you know, there's a penalty for businesses that don't pay back by staying in business. And so the property owner will also be respected, expected to, um, sign on the dotted line as it were. Yeah, to guarantee, thank you. And so if a new business takes advantage of this, doesn't stay in business, and the property owner is on the hook to pay us back to re... Okay.
Correct. Um, after three years, the grant is forgiven.
If they stay in business three years?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this language was modified, actually revised, as a result of trustee Sullivan's concerns. He actually raised this question about payback, and what about if you have a business that went out of business during this time?
Well, you know, my concern was, there is a tenant there in twelve months, receiving a substantial amount of subsidy for a project. Closes his business, bankrupt, or it's gonna be like getting blood from a turnip.
Yes.
You're not gonna get any capture of that grant. And so...
The property owner.
There needs to be some, some guarantee, and that's, uh, gonna come from the property owner, whose property was improved.
Right. I think it's a great addition. Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion?
We do. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Epic Healthy Living at 149 North Seymour. So, um, this went before the planned commission. And the first motion which I'll make is a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Meyer. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Motion carries.
Next motion, uh, is to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, and can I just ask this question? The commission voted to recommend this four to two. If we, but staff is not in favor of it. So do we, can we accept their recommendation and then deny it? Or do we have to not accept their recommendation?
No, you accept their recommendation. That just means what it says, you accept it.
Like physically accepting it? Okay. Okay. Bless you. Okay, so again, I'll make the motion to accept Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Um, thank you. So as we've all read in our packet, uh, the next motion is because staff recommends denial of this use variation because the proposed use of a community center deviates from the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. So I'll make the motion to authorize staff to draft a resolution denying the request for a use variation allowing a community center at 149 North Seymour Avenue.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Semple. Discussion?
Yeah, I think that would probably be a good idea. So, um, the petitioner, Epic Healthy Living, is proposing occupying, um, this 149 North Seymour in conjunction with another user, using it when they're not, to do something that, um, is a non-conforming use of this building. And really, could staff just help me out, 'cause I'm just having trouble breathing right now.
The proposed use is a non, is a non-permitted use, um, and so the use, the request before you's a use variation. Uh, the martial arts studio is considered a legal non-conforming use. Um, the use was there prior to the adoption of the new downtown district, so that use can be there so long as it continues to be in operation, and really so long as we continue to get interest for similar-type uses. Um, the, the request before you's because, um, the proposed tenant is nowhere near, or for that matter, similar to the use that martial, the martial arts studio is currently using it for.
Could you explain, again, I know that I read this in the staff report, but just for the benefit of everyone here, how this use is different?
Um, this use is different because they're, um, providing a number of other activities aside from physical training. Um, spelled out in the staff report, they're talking about, um, including activities like table tennis, uh, games, singing, photography, photography. And again, these are not activities that are currently being conducted in the martial arts studio, so that's why it's different.
Trustee Abernathy, you look very confused.
Well, I'm trying to understand why it's a problem for him to have table tenants.
I don't think it's the table tennis that's the problem.
What?
I don't think it's the table tennis that's the problem. Can you, Victor, maybe?
The problem becomes, it's not just the table tennis, it's the other host of activities are being, that are being done within this facility. The problem doesn't become the Tai Chi, the yoga, it's the healthy living, the dancing, the singing, the painting, the photography, the table tennis, and other games, all collectively. That becomes the problem, that when you put it all together, we put it under the category of a community center.
Okay.
And a community center within...
Is this for youth? Is this for adults?
Um, if at all possible, I'd like to, um, pass the floor down to the petitioner to provide an explanation of what she intends to do with the space.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Ya Ya Liu. Uh, I'm the president of Epic Healthy Living Education Center. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank the zoning commissioner board for recommending approval for, of our use variance several weeks ago. As, I especially want to thank those commissioners for their constructive feedbacks for us to develop a stronger business plan. So, uh, I, I am a PhD, I, I have a PhD in biochemistry. I have worked in pharmaceutical company in the drug discovery area for over eighteen years. So knowing firsthand the challenges in developing drugs to treat diseases such as cancer and Alzheimer's disease, uh, I would like to emphasize disease prevention is far more important, and we, every one of us, can achieve that through leading a healthy living style. And additionally, work-related stress is common in Americans working in the corporate environment. Uh, research has demonstrated that, uh, stress negatively impact our body's immune system and could lead... lead a variety of health issues. So, those are the two main reasons I want to set up this Epic Healthy Living Education Center. I would like our center to promote a healthy living style, to provide, we can form activities for working professionals, and also to provide learning opportunities for personal enrichment. And I believe our center will help the lives of many people in the communities surrounding Mondaline area. And right now, this 149 Seymour Avenue is used as a martial arts studio, but this facility also has setups for table tennis, badminton, and other activities. So, we intend to use the space as is without any structural modification. And I, I was just hoping to get feedbacks from you guys and hope for your favorable decisions on this. We already got the approval, recommendation for approval from the zoning board commissioner. And thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
And I think the owners are also here.
So, Victor, excuse me if I could just, is there anywhere in the downtown that this would be a permitted use?
Off the top of my head, no.
Where in Mondaline would it be a permitted use?
Oh, we're actually looking, looking into that right now. We're looking into the current zoning ordinance does not put this type of use in a community center category. And so, because this, this request is a fairly new request, and we're evaluating that against our zoning ordinance, we're actually doing quite a bit of research, finding an area that would be appropriate within our community to have this type of use. But we certainly think that it's not uncommon to see it in other commercial areas.
I'm sorry, it's not uncommon to see it in commercial?
It's not uncommon, it's not uncommon to see this type of use within commercial districts. Unfortunately, this use as permitted is, is being proposed in a, in a property, in properties that are now rezoned as residential, downtown residential.
Okay. Okay.
So, just so that, I think the board's clear that this property right now is zoned residential?
Yes, it's zoned downtown residential, whereas before, prior to the adoption of the current zoning ordinance back in 2012, it was zoned commercial.
And so, that's why there's commercial uses there today. We adopted a new zoning ordinance, zoned residential, and, and that's part of the problem why this used, because the long-term comprehensive plan view is for this to be residential.
Right. But right, and, and right now, we have, the roller rink is there?
Yeah, it's all commercial.
It's all commercial.
Right.
And they've expressed a willingness that when it, some project comes along of relocating.
Yes. Now, well, did, did, what did, did, did this, this did not pass planning and zoning, or it did pass?
It was a split decision, it passed.
Okay. And why is there a question about food and gambling? It says, Mr. Rikus questioned the commission how food and gambling violations would, they're gonna have food and gambling there?
No, not at all.
Well, that's why I'm sitting here, clerk-
It lists poker and mahjong as two of the things, but there won't, where's it?
Mahjong is not poker.
No, not gambling.
Yeah.
But they said it wasn't gambling.
Well, mahjong is played for money, so it could be considered-
No, there will be no money at all.
Well, I, I mean, you can also play a very friendly game of mahjong.
Yeah, that's all we play.
I do.
I mean, I have played friendly game of mahjong, you know?
The food is-
Okay, I don't see why they can't-
Well, I think the concern on the part of staff is that if we grant this variance, I really hate speaking for staff, since staff is here, staff can say what staff thinks.
The concern, the concern here is that if you, if the board considers approving this type of use, that you will, that it wouldn't be uncommon that we somewhere down the road to get, to get other use, other requests from other property owners that are in the same, same situation. We have instances throughout our downtown of property owners that, that are in the same need, that have vacant properties. We have some in our downtown, some properties that are currently, the use is industrial. We have vacant industrial buildings that have been vacant for quite some time, certainly properties that have seen better days, and that by considering this type of request, you in essence, provide an opportunity to those property owners to, to bring-
Build their faces.
To bring a prospective tenant to use the property in its current condition, and in essence, have another, another industrial use in the downtown, and that may hinder the village's redevelopment efforts. Well, that's, you know, that's some, for something to consider. I know that a couple of months ago, maybe even a year, there was a local business that was looking into purchasing an industrial property in the downtown. That business did not fit the goals and the visions for the re, for the downtown, had gone through the process, the plan commission process, had been denied, and was coming before the, was expected to come before the board and just withdrew their interest in continuing to solicit that appeal, and also withdrew their purchase interest in the property.
What did they want to do with that property?
In that specific interest, it was a body shop that wanted to go in there. But again, that-
Do you own the property?
No.
Or you're leasing?
Owner is also here.
Your own, okay, the owner's here, but you're leasing the property, correct?
Yes, yes.
I, I-
Trustee Sullivan. Thank you. I can understand, and I fully expect staff to interpret the zoning ordinance and to tell us exactly what it means, and, and those uses that are non-conforming, and perhaps advise against taking measure of granting a variance. However, this, this isn't a new building. Mrs. Lyle isn't saying, I want to tear the building down and build a facility for her use. Let's take advantage of a building that's there. And Epic Health Living is non-conforming, but so is the previous use, and so is this martial arts academy. And in between now and when we have a redevelopment for that location, as we hope the whole area downtown gets redeveloped, I think that we have to support property values, we have to support other businesses downtown, and that means putting those buildings and those businesses on the ground and, and functioning. And so, I'm, I would oppose this motion and would propose, if it's defeated, a motion to approve variance. If you want to tear that building down and, and build a new building for that use, no.
Right.
You want to use the building that's there, and you want to lease it, then thank you. Have opening, running a business downtown, generating traffic, and have everybody, tell everybody they gotta buy gas before they leave town.
I have a couple of comments.
Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wrote down a couple of comments based on the packet that was provided. In terms of the dietitian-related services, I just wanted to also point out that when you have a Seattle Sutton Healthy Eating Downtown, there's a wellness center right around the corner. I do understand from the packet as well that they have been, the landlords have been searching for a tenant for eighty nine to fill that space. There was a wrestling team that did a long, 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 the zone actually does allow, I believe, for art? Is this correct?
An art studio.
Okay, and was martial arts allowed as an art?
Martial arts was allowed as a commercial use under the previous code, so the, the use of, that is a permitted legal non-conforming.
Okay, so martial arts is a kind of art, art studio?
It, it actually could go off it today as an art studio, yes.
Okay. Because then I would argue that also photography and painting would also be art, more like an art studio than martial arts. I, for one, would want our businesses to do well. I see that they had called it an educational center, as they had requested it, but staff had classified it as a community center. It's, you know, almost the same thing, but slightly different flavor, community center almost gives a feel of transient people passing in and out off the street, whereas an educational center has registered students in their class. I just wanted to add a side note that, you know, there are many young people in town, and I mean, there's not much to do. I do believe this would be, you know, something they could go to and pick up hobby activities, ping pong, photography. That being said, I fully understand why someone planning and zoning voted no, and why staff would recommend it the way they did, because they are legally doing exactly what they're supposed to do.
Uh huh.
But I will leave it at that.
People who are, they belong, they have a membership, it's not like you can just walk in off the street, there's some-
That's right, that's right. It's membership-based, but once you signed up as a member, you'll be able to come to all the classes.
And is there a fee for joining as a member?
Yes, yes.
And do you know what that fee?
It's not expensive at all, it's fifty dollars lifetime.
A year, a month?
Just once, once.
Okay.
You only need to pay membership once.
Oh, I'll, I'll be there. Fifty bucks, one time, best rate you can find. Get a little, you're gonna still have the martial arts?
Yes, we have Tai Chi, yoga, and we have-
I'm there.
Dance classes, ballroom dancing, and all the other physical activity classes. Healthy eating is just a major component of it, so, and during that class, you will be watching some videos. We sometimes will invite experts, like doctors, dentists, to come to give presentations as well.
I have a question, then, how do you make money?
It's, it's a nonprofit organization.
A not-for-profit.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, too.
Trustee Simple?
Would your members be able to rent the facility from you for private parties?
No, we won't allow for that.
So, there would never be alcohol in there? Nobody would bring alcohol in?
That's correct.
You're not gonna serve it? You're not gonna condone it?
That's correct.
And what about overnight? You're not gonna have anybody staying overnight?
No, there will be no, absolutely no people staying there overnight. Twelve o'clock midnight is the closing time, we close the door at that time.
That's late.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna go along with this one, too, and go against staff's wishes, because I think this is a good interim use of-
Okay, so, we have a motion on the table? Would you?
I'll remove, I can remove my second.
Well, that doesn't-
Or we can-
No, no, we have to still-
We can vote on it?
Vote on it as it is, and-
Then we'd have to make a motion to approve the variation.
Can we do that, since the motion to approve is not on the agenda?
I'll raise staff to prepare. Good for them.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Voss?
Yes.
Wait, 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 we're voting no.
This is C, motion to authorize staff to draft a resolution denying-
To deny.
To deny, so we-
The one that was written to you.
The one, so we don't want them to deny. If we want to vote no, then we're not allowing you to-
To deny.
To deny it. Okay, so, we vote yes, then we're allowing you deny it. Okay, had to get that right.
I understood it with my vote.
Voss?
With yes.
Yes. Simple?
I'll go no.
Meyer?
No.
Abernathy?
No.
Kim?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Motion is denied. Go, Mr. Mayor.
Go.
So, that's-
The motion is appropriate now. All right, I, I made the motion to authorize staff to dress, draft a resolution granting a variation allowing a community center at 149 North Seymour Avenue.
I'll second that.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Abernathy, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Kim.
Thank you. Could it be called an educational center? Or does it have to be community center?
What are they calling it?
I think staff did a pretty thorough analysis.
Education center.
Well-
What it's called, it doesn't really matter.
I think, I think it would be appropriate to defer staff as the description. Staff has the expertise.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
Very good.
Let me know when you open.
We'll be in the room.
Trustee Voss, anything else?
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next, that takes us to the Communication and Marketing Committee report from trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things real quick, I'm burning the oil here. For all on the board, this week, we should be receiving the branding toolkit from DEI. We'll make some adjustments and get your feedback. There will also be a tagline and a couple variations of the logo.
How will we be receiving it?
Goodbye email? Also, Dawn and our marketing, which is pretty much Dawn, has been working on a video tour of the Village of Mondaline, so expect that on our website on April fourteenth.
Thank you. Next, trustee Abernathy, few items for the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of motions for this evening. One is for the fiscal year 2015 Street Improvement Project. We are going to have a construction contract award, and we, our first motion is to accept all submitted bids, as seen on exhibit TNI dash one.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Simple, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then our second motion is to award a contract to Chicagoland Paving Contractors, Inc., for the fiscal year 2015 Street Improvement Project.
Second to motion.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Simple, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and then the third motion is to authorize the mayor and the village clerk to execute a contract with Chicagoland Paving Contractors, Inc., in the amount of one million nine hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred, subject to receipt of required bonding and insurance.
Second to motion.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Simple, discussion?
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, trustee Simple.
When will work commence?
Will we have pre-construction probably within about ten days from now, assuming the contractor can meet, and then it's really subject to his availability and his schedule.
Potentially even before school is out, construction will get underway.
I would really feel confident about that.
It'll be done before winter time, too?
Oh, it'll be done well before winter time.
Fantastic.
You never know with our weather.
Yeah. The other thing that's good to note is that this did come well under budget, correct? The budget includes funding in the amount of two point five?
Yes.
And we're at one point nine?
It, depending on how it, you look at it, because certain pots of money, so to speak, are utilized to fund this fully. So, the stormwater component is right at the budget amount, the local roads or the streets portion is the portion that is significantly below the budget amount.
Okay, all right, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Just one on construction. Yes, trustee Sullivan. There's some locklomen streets, are they to be the, the same type of construction that was put in last year?
Yes.
Small bookers?
Yes, same, same typical cross-section. We aren't doing the same water quality features, because again, as we mentioned in the last meeting, we don't have that direct connection to the lake with this storm sewer system in this area.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?[1776.66]
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Very good, motion carries.
Okay, then I have another motion to authorize the mayor and village clerk to execute the preliminary construction engineering services agreement for the motor fuel tax funds with Gualt Hamilton Associates, Inc., in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and four thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars, as seen in Exhibit TNI dash two.
Second to motion.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Simple, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, trustee Sullivan.
These amounts for inspection engineering, even the design engineering are much less than they have been in years past, and I think we can thank, and of course, the staff is gonna do some of the work in this project, too.
Yes, each year, we have the construction manager on site. We also have our engineering technician, Gary Wilson, that supervises all of our construction work throughout, so they're managing the manager, so to speak.
And I think that's, that's great, I think we've seen a lot of cost savings since we've had a engineering and public works head working staff in that regard. Used to have these inspection costs, been close to nine percent of the whole project, and this is right around five percent. That's good, thank you. Okay.
Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Boucher, have you worked with Gualt Hamilton Associates in the past?
Yes, quite frequently. We've, we've had them as our local road improvement, the capital improvement plan, the street improvement project, they've been our program engineer for the last two years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. That's all I have for you this evening. Okay. Other reports, item G, any trustee wish to bring up anything this morning?
Can I ask a question? I'm wondering whatever happened with the aggregate, we, did we get...
Coming up here.
Oh, it is?
Village staff, item number two.
Oh, I didn't see it, okay. Didn't have a report on it, so.
You're ruining the surprise.
Anyone else, other reports? Nope?
Nope.
Let's go to the scheduled business for omnibus vote items. We have two, Exhibits A and B. Does any trustee wish to poll either item A or B? Okay, and with that, I need a motion to pass the omnibus vote items.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Abernathy, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Very good, motion carries.
And the second item, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Flynn, but before I do that, just as a reminder, the board authorized the mayor to sign a guaranteed contract if the electric rates hit seven point nine. So, there's no contract tonight, so I'll let Mr. Flynn recount his conversations with Mr. Hoover, who's our consultant.
Thank you, John. As John said, the bids came in higher than seven point nine, so we don't have authorization to sign the master power agreement. Mr. Hoover looked more carefully at our contracts, which are up in July. He's determined that we can really wait until May twelfth, the last drop-dead date for accepting the contract. So, he's recommending that we rebid, get bids as of May twelfth, continue to watch the contracts, the pricing, market pricing, and come to the board on May twelfth. He'll be available at that time, that meeting, to answer any questions, and we'll see how it goes.
Can I ask a question? Does that, is the order to allow the mayor to sign now over?
I believe so. I believe it ran through.
It ran through tonight, so it's no longer, he can't sign an agreement.
We would want to extend that, some other, because if something happens, our next meeting is April twenty-eighth, so we hate to lose an opportunity to sign on to a guaranteed contract if it's that number.
Where did they go up to?
The prices, I'm not exactly sure, it fluctuated in the eight, a little over eight cents.
Four eights, mid eights.
The ComEd will announce its rates a couple weeks after May twelfth. The idea, just to remind you, is to take a guaranteed rate, the guaranteed rate's a little higher than the non-guaranteed rate, but if you take the guaranteed rate, and then ComEd announces a lower rate, that's your escape clause, is basically the guarantee. Switch everybody to ComEd.
But then we have to stay with ComEd for a year, no matter what, and they can change their rate every six months?
They...
Or is it every...
Their rates every six months, twice a year. They evaluate twice a year, and they can also, monthly, I think it is, add a percentage. I don't know what the likelihood of that is, if you offer down by, I think it's half a cent. David's recommendation is to just wait and see how the prices go. So...
If we're gonna wait and see, why wouldn't we authorize the mayor to make the contract if it were seven point nine?
Our recommendation is that you do that. And I'll have Mr. Marino read the motion that was taken two weeks ago, acted on.
It's a motion to authorize the mayor to rebid the program with the advice of the village's consultant, NYMAC, and accept or reject the lowest bid, not to exceed seven point nine cents per kilowatt hour for the contract, not to exceed three years, and escape clause that needs the approval of the attorney of the village.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Kim, discussion?
I'm sorry.
You're just getting worse and worse.
I hate, no, really.
Yeah, I can see it happening.
It's been a long day. Can we just repeat this one more time? What's that motion again?
We're allowing Steve to sign a contract as, if it hits seven point nine percent.
More or less.
Okay, same as before.
Same as before.
Three years. Eight months.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
No.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then the vote was four to two in favor.
Yes.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Village attorney, Mr. Marino.
I have no report, no need for executive...
No need for executive session?
Good.
Okay. Village clerk?
No report.
No report from the village clerk? Other business? All right. That takes us to the adjournment, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Kim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much, we're dismissed.
You're dismissed, thank you.